It's so nice, it's perfect. See what you did, you stood up here and everybody was paying attention. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for joining us today. This is the Lackawanna County Commission for Women's Annual Health Seminar. That means that every year we pick a different topic and we discuss it. And today, we thought we would go with a very hot topic. One that these panelists know much about, the opioid effect is what we called it. There's a lot of information out there regarding how this affects families and people in general, and our panel is going to discuss that. I must say first, that I'm second, third, whatever, wherever I am in this, I'm Laurie Cullen, and I am the President of the Commission. And I'd love if all of the Commission members could stand and we could applaud them for being part of this, the Lackawanna County Commission for Women Board. Thank you, ladies, for helping, I truly appreciate it. So, we're going to get started, I'm going to introduce the panel. And I first need to let you know that today is the National Day of Prayer. So Commissioner Lorraine Cummings will be here momentarily. However, we knew this, she would be a little bit late because she is saying a prayer on Courthouse Square. It had to be at the same time, so to do her duties everywhere, she will be sneaking in momentarily, but that is where she is until she gets here. So, we need to know that. So, we do have Lorraine Cummings, who is one of our Lackawanna County Commissioners. Also, we have Mr. Scott Constantini, who is with the Wright Center. He is the Director of Behavioral Health and the Continuance of...
Center of Excellence.
Center, I'm sorry. Scott, I know that. Didn't I just ask you that?
You did.
Center of Excellence Program. Then we, yes, of course. Center. There we go. Thanks, Scott. He'll call me tomorrow and say, "Did you real..." No, I'm kidding. Next, we have Dr. William Dempsey, or otherwise, I love, I call you Billy. Isn't that cute? It's Irish, isn't it, Bill? Billy, it's cute. Bill is with the Wright Center. He's the Medical Director of the Clark Summit Practice and Associate Program Director of the Family Resident Program. Bill, give him a nice warm welcome. Next up, we have Mr. John Knowles. John is the Senior Marketing Representative at Clearbrook. A nice hand for John, please. Next up, we have Shane Scanlon, and Shane is the Lackawanna County District Attorney. A nice round of applause for Shane. And now, no offense, guys, the prettiest one on the panel so far. What do you think? No, I'm not on the panel, you're over here. Judge Julia K. Monley, everybody. She is Lackawanna County Judge. Proud of her. So, we thank you, and again, thank you so much for coming. It's an honor to do this, it's an honor, we, just so we point out too, this will be televised for Electric City TV. And of course, our good guy back here, Mr. Mark McGlorry, who shows up everywhere he can to make us all look good. Mark, thank you very much. Thank you. And we have this event here held at the Scranton Cultural Center, which of course, this is a beautiful room, it is a wonderful facility, and we are fortunate enough as on the Commission to have the current Executive Director on our board. And Deb, I want to thank you. A nice round of applause for Deb Moran Peterson, Executive Director. And our Ms. Karen is standing back there, she does all of our food and beverage and everything going on, and we have Karen Kobeski standing there, Sobeski, she is a doll, look at her back there. Hi Karen. Good job on that end. Okay, I think we got everybody. All right, here we go. So, just to start out, let's tell everybody, and anyone could say, I'll jump in, let's discuss what an opioid actually is. Please explain what that means. Dr. Dempsey, want to do that?
Okay. An opiate comes from a plant, opium, you know, and most of the opiate is grown in Afghanistan, believe it or not, so I said, I think Afghanistan is trying to destroy our country without firing a shot, just filling the streets with heroin. And so, from opium comes the drug heroin that you're all familiar with, okay? So, that's the abuse drug. But, the drugs that we use in healthcare would be morphine, okay? Do you see that quite commonly? You've heard of Vicodin, you know, you hear that, Percocet, you hear of Oxycontin, and codeine, like Tylenol number threes and such like that. So, those would be the drugs that would typically be classified as opiates. And the drugs that we're seeing abused are all of those, you know? So, for instance, I teach residents, and I won't let them prescribe Vicodin or Percocet anymore, you know, because it gets on the street, and then they sell them, you know, they sell them on bikes and perks, you know, the kids get them, they steal them from grandpa, they steal them from their parents, out of the medicine cabinet, and they sell them for 50 bucks. How much do they get for those?
10 bucks a milligram?
It depends on the milligram.
Yeah, so, they're making a lot of money, you know? I have old ladies selling Vicodin so they could pay the rent, you know? That's how bad this has become, but that's basically what an opiate is.
Okay, so, once someone is prescribed, and we've talked about this, Bill, you and I, and many others, about the actual prescription. Someone, because of the fifth vital sign is pain, and now doctors have to ask, "What is your pain level?", and deal with that and properly medicate them. This has become an issue with that because you can't overlook, and someone can't tell you, "Oh, I'm in pain", and you can't say, "I don't believe you." So, it's very difficult, from a doctor, physician's standpoint, to get that understanding of just how much pain you're actually in, but now you have to. Is it by law that that is required? How does that all, did that happen? Not by law, but how?
You know, I worked as an emergency room doctor for 20 some years, and what they would do, when someone came into the ER, they would take their vital signs, their blood pressure, their pulse, respiratory rate, temperature, and they're obligated in the ER to say, you know, to ask their pain level. On a scale from 0 to 10, what's your pain level? And of course, anybody with any pain at all says, "12." You know? And we have to manage that. If we don't manage that, you know, they send out these surveys called Press Ganey surveys, and a big question they ask is, "Was your pain adequately managed during your stay in the hospital?" And then, we're criticized by administration if we haven't managed that pain properly, which leads to, which led to some of the problems we're having now. So, what I say, don't ask 0 to 10, say, "How is your pain affecting your ability to function?" That's a better question to ask, because everybody says 10. And if so, tell me how it's affecting your ability to function. And that gives me a better idea of what I need to do to try and, what medications I need to use to help make their pain manageable.
So, if someone, again, I guess because we can say this is true, and John, you and I were just talking about addiction in general, whether it's alcohol, or drugs, or whatever it is. There's some people who can drink and do what they do, or take drugs and do what they do, and the addiction or the craziness doesn't happen. So, when, and anyone, again, feel free to jump in on this. If you're being prescribed, because there's so many people who need pain medicine to help them function throughout the day, at least for a temporary period of time, after surgery, whatever it is, how do you gauge then the person who can control that? Or, as you were saying, John, you deal with, you know, you have to have, your spirit and everything else has to work with it. How do you know? Is there a way of knowing the people who are just saying this that may be addicted, and you think, "Oh God, I hope this doesn't happen"? Or, do you just have to deal with them in general and say, "Okay, I have to do it because they're in pain"? Is there, are there common symptoms or signs that you would see in someone who's beginning, starting to be addicted? What happens? And what about the prescriptions from doctor to doctor? How does that all come into play?
I believe if you go back and you look at, as Bill was saying, the, you know, this opiate epidemic is a perfect story. Opiates themselves, you can become addicted within a week. But, the issue was, from a pain standpoint, was, end of life is where people were really making the mistake, is that, so cancer and end of life type pain issues is what a lot of these opiates were developed to address. So, Oxycontin was developed for the person who was about to die, and it wasn't an issue if you became addicted to it. And they were marketed, what it was, is we had a perfect storm where this came together as a pretty significant marketing thing. The folks who actually produced many of these, many of them went to jail and paid some pretty big fines because they said, "You can't become addicted to this." You know, they cited a very small letter to the Journal of American Medical Association and said, "This is the research that says only 1% of the people will become addicted." And they knew it wasn't true, and they got, and they ended up going to jail for it and paying a fine. And so, the dilemma is, is that there are some drugs that, once you take them, you will become addicted fairly quickly, and in this case, five to seven days, you can become addicted, because it's that powerful. The pathology is much different for this type of addiction than for alcohol addiction, which takes place over a longer period of time. So, there's a lot of other social factors involved, there's a lot of other emotional factors involved, spiritual factors, things like that. The other part of this perfect storm was that, you know, we had some changes in our health laws, and we had some changes in our culture, and this became, heroin became very lucrative. The cocaine business was taken care of, the policies that the government came up with, and law enforcement came up with, did a very good job of putting marijuana and cocaine on the shelf, and these guys were making billions of dollars selling this. They're not going away, just like the guys in pharma weren't going away. There's billions and billions of dollars. If you talk with the folks from the DEA, they say, "You know, all these things are wonderful, but these guys have billions and billions of dollars to throw at this to keep putting heroin in our children's hands, or keep putting pills in our adults' hands." And so, trying to define, you know, what's the difference is, from a pathology standpoint, is very difficult, you know, certainly the DSM-5, which is what you use to do it from a diagnosis standpoint, is there. Doctor Barry said, you know, "We don't give it to folks because they go out on the street." Everybody's got a couple of things laying up in their, you know, the medicine cabinet. And, you know, a young kid could take two or three of mom's Vicodin for a couple of weeks. I recently had, not long ago, I had some knee surgery, and they gave me 90 Loratap, a prescription for that. And I said, "You know..." Actually, I told the doctor, I said, "I'm going to fire you because you obviously didn't read my chart, I'm a drug addict. Why would you give me Loratap? And why would you give me 90 of them?" But, that was, because those were the standards, so as a, we've really come a long way in the last two or three years where they're prescribing, you know, the standards for prescribing have changed pretty significantly. The doctors got a very bad rap in this, because they relied on the prescribing protocols and on the pharmaceutical industry, which was traditionally led by scientists who said, "This is what's right." Then it became about money. And once it became about money, the doctors, in my belief, were misled and did what they thought was right, and it turned out that they were lied to. And we're catching up to that now, we're getting ahead of the game. But, now you have heroin. And, you know, we were sitting in a meeting not long ago where they talked about, somebody got a prescription in Lackawanna County for 500 Oxycontin. They want prescription, and it was just amazing that that was possible. But, there are enough Oxycontin's prescribed so that each individual, man, woman, and child in the county, would have 53 pills individually. That's, now think about that. Everybody in this room would have your own 53 Oxycontin. There's enough written, just in this county. So, you know, I think it's, how do you find the diagnosis? You know, there are certain things. Are there people with genuine pain? There's no question. I have a sister with cancer, and she's taking these things, and it's a godsend. I don't need them for my knee pain, my, you know? You know, do you need it for a back? So, there are some issues, certainly, that go along with that, but people, the thing that isn't advertised is, is that it doesn't take long to become addicted. Takes about five to seven days, and then you're there.
Can I just say something?
Sure.
I think it's important to note too, that pain is subjective, right? So, I might be a 10, but that 10 might be a four for Dr. Dempsey. So, it's very hard to measure what one's pain level is. I think that, when you start asking questions about their quality of life, and if it's affecting their quality of life, I think you have to take that into consideration. There are people out there who definitely need pain medications, right? And I think one of the other things that's important to note is that, there is a huge difference between dependency and addiction. There are people that, in my eyes, this is what I feel, is that there are people who have been on pain medication, who've never abused it, never sold it, never stole, never did anything criminal to get the drug, right? That are dependent on the drug. We deal with them on a daily basis, that we're trying to wean them off fentanyl. They've been on fentanyl patches for 15 years because they broke their back, right? So, we're trying to get them off it, because we know that long-term painkillers can actually worsen the pain, and worsen the condition. So, we're trying to wean them off of it, but they're going through withdrawal. They've been on it for so long, they're dependent on it. So, you know, I think it's just important to note that.
Okay. And Lorraine, you and I spoke about this when we talked about forming this panel, and we talked just about what Dr. Dempsey was saying before, and John, about the doctors and the scripts, and that you said at one point, as a nurse, it was sort of, I'm putting words if I'm saying this, but it infuriated you that you, it was going on, and then you realized the stuff that goes along with it as they're talking about, and how your mind has changed about this, and why you're so engaged in what's happening with this epidemic.
Yes, and thank you. And I researched this in depth because it happened in my family, a family relative got, was affected, and I initially was blaming the physicians, as I told you, and the physicians came back and pushed back on me. And I started researching to find out that, this all started in the 90s with, as they were just saying, Purdue Pharmaceuticals, who convinced our federal government and our, you know, medical community to change pain to a vital sign. And that, in turn, created this pain scale, and they actually consider pain as a vital sign. Well, you can die if you don't have your blood pressure, that's definitely a sign that it's a vital sign. But, if you don't have pain, you're alive. So, that needs to change, that's the first thing that needs to change, and that's what I've been working on as well, because then that will make it easier for our physicians who are stuck in this middle where JCA accreditation actually was doing their satisfaction surveys and questioning patients. If those pain scales weren't, after they couldn't, you know, got them all together and put their data together, if the physicians didn't come up with a positive grade on that, they would not refund them. Their finances were in trouble, especially the hospitals and rehabs and physicians' offices. So, the doctors were stuck, and that's what the doctors in this area let me know about, and that's why I started doing this in 2012. I just had to, you know, as a nurse and a medical professional, I felt that this is something that needs to be brought out to the community, and I'm so grateful that you're having this panel. And, you know, I think that my next move in this task force that we've created at the county is, you know, you are the matriarchs and patriarchs, and it is now down to your personal responsibility, when you go to the doctors and take your children in, to ask, "Do they really need that medication?" That's where it has to start. You know, our District Attorney Shane Scanlon and Judge Monley will help with those that are already affected, but we really have to get out there and start letting parents and teachers and our kids know, you know, that we're going to protect them and not have this, these drugs in our home, for one, and utilize the drop boxes that we have and the pharmaceuticals that'll help, pharmacies that are helping us. And hopefully, we'll be able to get a hold of this on our own, because it seems, the doctors are, you know, they were basically stuck in the middle, literally. And when I met with Geisinger as well, and out in Washington, I met a doctor who said 10 years ago, in medical school, she was trained to start with opioids as a treatment for pain, rather than what we used to use. And Dr. Dempsey, if you wanted to go on further with that, is, in the 80s, I was trained, and we had what they called standing orders, so, which now I don't believe you can use, but we would have a standing order for Tylenol, extra strength Tylenol, and Multrum, and we would be able to give that based on, if the Tylenol didn't work, we'd give the extra strength, and then we'd go to the Multrum. If none of that worked, then we called the physician. And medications like opioids were used for, as we've already heard, end of life care, period. Now, these doctors are actually being trained to use it first, and they don't, they don't know the difference, they don't know what we were taught in the 80s, and they're going by what they were taught now. So, that's the other issue I think we need to work on as our colleges, our medical schools, to, you know, put the training back to where it belongs. And, you know, I feel so bad for the physicians because they've been put in a position that should have never happened, and I really think that that's the next step in what we're working on in the county and on the task force that we put together, because it's just so important to just stop this in its tracks. So, thank you.
Dr. Dempsey, that is, I remember, I'm just going back to the 80s, I was born in the 80s. Don't laugh, really, I mean, I could have been. 61, mine, not 61, I was born in 61. I said that to someone, I said, "61", and they said, "You're 61"? I said, "No, 1961, I don't know." So, but, I remember having a C-section with my first child, and what you're, they, "Are you in pain?", and of course, I said, "No", because I couldn't wait to get the heck out of there. So, I said, "No", but it was Tylenol, it was extra strength, or it was Tylenol with codeine, or whatever. What happened to that, to where we are today? And I know Lorraine kind of touched on that, but why can't we just go back to those kind of drugs that help more than these prescribed drugs?
Well, I think we can, but we have to re-educate the physician force, because the physicians are trained now, you know, as Lorraine just said, to go with those drugs first. You know, "This is bad pain, you know, she just got surgery, she needs something stronger." But, I have a lot of people, they say, "The doctor gave me Vicodin." I said, "I didn't take any of them, I didn't need Vicodin." So, it depends on the pain tolerance of the patient too, but you take Vicodin, now you can't breastfeed, you know, because now your baby's getting that, you know? So, in that particular situation. I said, "But, we write the orders, like you said, you know, the orders are there, and, you know, you say Tylenol, and that, you know, and then you say, 'Oh, give it...'" "I'm not taking Tylenol, that doesn't do anything for me, give me the Vicodin." And once they've had Vicodin once...
They want it.
Nothing else works. I don't care what you try and sell.
So, do you, at both Scott and Dr. Dempsey, with the Wright Center and all of these docs that are coming from there, and as Lorraine's saying, the training, I'm sure Shane and Julie and John, you would agree, that it is about education, it is what we have to train our upcoming doctors. What are, what's your focus at the Wright Center, that maybe people could understand better about what actually the Wright Center's role in our community is and with the docs? And is that something you're trying to weave into their training?
Yeah. I mean, I can say, since I started in August, I've actually ran reports on how many patients are actually getting opiates prescribed to them. So, I think it's important for us to know who's on them, right? What they're on them for, but I can say that since I started, I've seen a significant reduction in opiates being prescribed. I can't tell you the last time I saw an opiate, maybe besides a low, one of the opiates that's on the lower end, tramadol, you know, but I don't see hardly any being prescribed. I mean...
We don't start them on, we have a lot of people who somebody else started them on, you know? And once they, it's like taking, when someone has anxiety, once somebody gave them Xanax once, well, you know, nothing else works, because they're dependent, you know, not addicted like Scott. They're dependent on it, and they can't, you can't get them off.
The only thing, the only coping skill that they ever used was a Xanax, right? As a PRN. So, they got a little stressed out, Xanax, Klonopin, right? I mean, we have an opioid crisis, but we also have a benzodiazepine crisis, right? So, I mean, I think that a lot of people are mentally and physically dependent on, you know, a medication to solve every problem in their life.
Who doesn't have anxiety, and who doesn't have pain?
Right, we all do.
Everybody has pain and anxiety.
Right. And, you know, another one too, is, you know, everybody can't focus, and they need Ritalin, and they need, you know, Adderall. Everybody needs something to, you know, immediately get that quick fix and fix that problem, and, you know, they never develop the proper coping mechanisms to work through it. So, one of the things that we utilize is refer them to counseling, or, you know, if you're telling me that you can't focus, we can send you for an evaluation before we prescribe you Adderall, you know, a two-day intensive psychological or psychiatric test to determine if you do truly have that. Or, you know, I think that our residents, our docs, everybody has been really looking at it more and more, right? So, we also use the PDMP now, which we can go on and we can tell you every prescription you had in the last five years, four years, you know?
Tell them about the anger when we try and get them off the stuff.
Yeah, it's, so, I was just laughing when you were talking about Tylenol, because I dealt with a patient yesterday who came in, and, you know, she had her mind set on what she wanted. I got called into a room, and she said, "I just need something for this pain, this pain is ridiculous." And I said, "Well, have you talked to the doctor about that?", and she said, "Well, they're not listening." You know, "They don't want to give me Oxycontin, or Percocets, or whatever, you know, I need something stronger." And I said, "Well, it's the doctor's discretion, their name does go on that prescription, and they have the right to tell you, 'No.'" And, you know, that's something we need to start saying, is, "No", right? And she said, "Fine, I'll just go into liver or kidney failure by eating a bottle of Advil or Tylenol, and, you know, it'll be on you." And I said, "It won't be on us, that's your choice. There are other alternatives to your pain." I said, "Have you ever tried physical therapy?" I said, "'Cause I don't see anywhere in your chart that you've ever had physical therapy." And it was all around knee pain and hip pain, right? So, I mean, I'm not an MD, but I try to put the fire up for the MDs, right? Because they are, some addicts are exhausting, and they will, you know, fight with you for four hours. And when we talk about the anger, it's, now that we're cutting people, or saying no, we're having a lot more incidence of not-so-happy patients, especially when you have to have the come-to-Jesus conversation with them that they're not getting it anymore.
Which I'm glad that that's happening, because, anybody jump in here, but that, before we go, I wanted, because I'm quite, I'm not forgetting you two. So, next, I'm going to ask Shane, if you...
Before we actually switch topics...
Yeah, go ahead.
We're talking about how our doctors have done this, we're talking about how the drug companies have done it, but we've done it. You know, number one, we've become a society that demands instant gratification. You know, when I was a kid, whatever my favorite television show was, I would get to watch an episode tonight, and I would have to wait seven days to watch the next episode of that television show. My three-year-old daughter, I could catch her up in the middle of the night, she puts the cartoons on that she likes, and they change daily, but she knows how to put it on demand at three years old. And, you know, at 2:00 in the morning, she's watching episode after episode of cartoons. Every one of our kids walk around with a computer in their pocket, that if you have any questions about anything, instantly you know what it is. And, you know, like the doctor said, there is pain in life. It's moderately painful for all of us to get up in the morning and get dressed to go to work. You know, it's painful when we open our paychecks, it's painful when we put gas in our cars. There is pain in life, and we have to start, as a society, understanding that we have to deal with a little bit of pain, and toughen up.
And the task force, Shane, that Lorraine is talking about, I know we're trying to get that in too, so, could either one of you talk about, because I don't know, do you guys all know that that's happening in Lackawanna County?
That what's happening.
That a task force for the, okay, so, let's talk a little bit about that, because that's important to know what's happening.
When I first got on the... Shane came to one of my meetings, and I was, I met with him even two years before that about, you know, the problems that I saw in the opioid addiction, and I spoke to him about the physicians as well. But, when I came on board, I met with Shane, and I met with Bo Hoben from Drug and Alcohol, and we put together a task force where, you know, my initiatives were five initiatives. And was, one, the first one was, you had to get rid of the stigma, because what I'd always hear is, you know, like, the people were afraid to, you know, even discuss the fact that they had this in their family. And what I was seeing as a nurse was, there's no stigma, because every family has it, from the young to the elderly in the nursing homes, where they're addicted in the nursing homes. So, that was my first thought in my head, is that's where we need to go, and education and get into the school districts to show what our county is doing, and what our District Attorney and our judges are doing, and our Drug and Alcohol Unit, and what we have to offer at that point. Once that was out there in the, you know, in the county, I felt the next step, it actually had to go to prevention and education. And that's where, like I said, personal responsibility and our job as the matriarchs, as the Women's Commission, as the leaders of the community, we need to get out and, you know, make that a point, that, you know, our kids shouldn't be put on whatever, like, just because they're running across the room. I had, you know, you hear about the kids being put on all these different medications for ADHD. Do they really need that? You know, I mean, we're starting with the opioids, but it is a fact, as we're hearing from this whole entire panel, that we are that generation, it appears, that we don't want to have stress, we don't want to have pain, we don't want to have anything, and a pill is going to correct that for us, when in fact, it's a learned behavior on how to deal with that. That's where we move forward in life, and learn how to become the community leaders that we... and learn how to become the community leaders that we need our children to be, and the parents that they need to become. So, that's where my focus is now, and I appreciate that, you know, we're, we're discussing that at this point.
Julia, I'm on, I was going to, now I'm going to call her Dr. Monley, what are you, Judge Monley, the attorney Mon, Judge Monley? Tell everybody, too, if you would, because you see this firsthand, dealing with family court, and the issues that arise within a family dealing with this, and the levels of what people go to to get these drugs and to do what they do to their families. Could you tell the audience a little bit about that?
And before I went on the court, before I joined the court and was assigned to family court, I practiced for about twenty-five years, and I did personal injury work, representing people who were injured in different kinds of accidents. So, I had experience representing people who had chronic, many of them chronic pain, and they would be prescribed a vast array of medications, including opiates. And dealing with clients who, after a very short amount of time, became addicted to prescription drugs. And I would deal with clients who would end up, you know, if the one doctor wouldn't give them another prescription for this medication, they would end up going to another doctor, and there would be drug-seeking behavior. And not that long ago, a good friend of mine, whose father, who was a fairly well-known person in our community, he passed away, I went to the WAKE, and not long after she reached out to me to look at a case, and again, I was still practicing attorney, doing even medical malpractice, okay? She consulted with me to look at the case, to see if what had happened with the father was, a doctor prescribed pain medication, opiates. He overdosed, the father overdosed. He continued, knowing this, continued to prescribe the opiates. He overdosed, and he died as a result. And I did not know this until, obviously, she came to me, the family was wrecked by, by what happened. But, so that is the experience that I draw on, having practiced in doing personal injury work. So, lo and behold, then I am now handling custody cases, dependency cases, PFA cases. I would say seventy-five to eighty percent of the cases that I see every day have a big element of drug addiction. I've seen parents, and younger parents, going into the stash of not just, well, opiates, it's more, you know, anxiety medication, whatever, that the children, and I'm talking little children, are prescribed. The parents are stealing the kids', the kids' medications. It's the grandparents who are taking the kids. The first week I went on the bench, I kid you not, I, I think almost, almost every day that week, I was sending at least one member of a family upstairs for an immediate urinalysis, urine, a drug screen, okay? And, and since I've gone on, I, I can't even tell you how many times I've had to do it. And in a week, okay, and those with more complex, darker addictions, I send out for a ninety-day hair follicle test, test that can tell the real story of what is actually going on. I've had cases, you know, emergency special relief come in, where one parent or one family member is trying to obtain custody of a child. Situation where a sister of a woman who had an infant came in for an emergency special relief, knew her sister was addicted, had a huge problem, ended up tracking the sister, the sister wasn't responding, tracking the sister to some kind of motel down in Luzerne County, got the owner of the motel to break into the room, and found the little infant on the floor, and the sister completely passed out undead. And now, what's a wonderful thing is, after, you know, doing this, the case was then assigned to me. So, you try to pick up the pieces, and you try to get, you know, what I've tried to do, since I've gone on the court, is really be in touch with all the services that are available in our community to try to help these people get the help they need. Because they are so entrenched in their addictions and their problems, it's beyond belief, okay? But what I did, you know, and I can share other stories with you, what I did was, one particular situation that was in the news nationally, this is a sample, and, and I'll pass this around. This, I, I don't know where in the nation this occurred, but this is like what I, the kind of stuff I see every day. And the police found these parents of this child who had a history of horrific addiction, and the police to show the actual problem. And I believe these people, I don't know if they were given Narcan or whatever, but they're passed out zonked in the van, and their little son is in the backseat. And these people are overdosed, obviously, so you can pass that around, and this is another caveat. But these are the kind of cases that I see every single day. I just had one at the beginning of this week, where Office of Youth and Family Services came in to me, we have an emergency protective order. The father had to be revived with Narcan, okay? He was overdosed, in Luzerne County, and the case is up here, the mother resides here. I think the mother's in jail up here, or whatever. But they had to revive the guy with the Narcan, the child is an infant. They weren't, he came in the court, I saw him, he, he was revived. Thank God, however, we have, in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, there are new laws. And I just heard from our Secretary of Health, Karen Murphy, who's wonderful and is really in tune, another nurse. Thank God for our nurses, okay? You know, she assisted with the idea of, with Narcan, okay? That that is available to anybody, friends, family of addicted people in the communities. You can actually print out an order, you don't have to get an order from the doctor now, right, Bill?
Right.
That's true, a standing order, okay? They can print out and have that on hand for your addicted family member, for God forbid they, they OD.
What about police and, and EMT, they, they have that available, too, don't they, Shane?
For years and years, our, our paramedics and ambulance crews would carry around Narcan, and they, they were able to revive people who were overdosing or experiencing an opioid overdose event. In two thousand and fifteen, the DA's Association got grant money, and through an effort throughout the state, we put naloxone into the hands of first responders, police officers. Since that time, here in Lackawanna County, we've had over fifty saves by law enforcement. Earlier this year, our office provided it to the Scranton Fire Department, they're the first fire department in our county that now has naloxone on all of their trucks, because sometimes in the city, Rescue One is able to get to some of the scenes faster than the police officers or paramedics. So, it's an, an effort to try to, you know, save lives. We're at a critical stage, for the first time as, as a country, we're losing more people now to accidental overdoses than we are to car crashes.
Yeah.
In, and it's staggering the rate at which it's climbing locally. Two thousand and fourteen, we had thirty-five fatal overdoses. Two thousand and fifteen, it almost doubled to sixty-nine. Last year, we were right around a hundred. Now, last year, Luzerne County had over a hundred and fifty. That is a ton of loss here locally. And, you know, there, there's frustration, although the naloxone and Narcan are saving lives, if it's administered fast enough. It's administered, they end up in an emergency room, and they're signing themselves out against medical advice, against medical treatment, and not getting any help. So, we experience it again. We need some laws to change, so that doctors can keep those people there and get them referred to or brought into some sort of treatment facility, so that we stop the rate at which we're losing people.
And John, I'm, to follow that, which is a perfect segue, Shane, you didn't even know I was going to ask this, but would you tell everybody, as we spoke about earlier, too, how that happens when someone is detoxed and then taken to a, a treatment facility, what the, the protocol is, please?
Certainly, from an inpatient standpoint, or a detox standpoint, you know, there, there are varying levels of care. One of the things that people, that's often misunderstood is that opiate withdrawal is not life-threatening. You can die from using it, you won't die from withdrawing from it. It's incredibly uncomfortable, but it's not life-threatening. Whereas if you were drinking alcohol or a benzodiazepine, that's life-threatening. So, it's really a slippery slope, just trying to get people into detox, because if an individual gets arrested and goes to jail, and is in jail for three days, the insurance company will say they don't need, they don't meet detox criteria, they're not approved for that, they can go to a lesser level of care. So, accessing a higher level of care has become much more difficult, and you need to be in acute withdrawal and demonstrate acute withdrawal symptomology, and, usually that can take, and that, and depending on what the, our dilemma is the cutting agents, we used to have a standard protocol for, for detox. If you came in for heroin detox, usually it would be, you know, about a ten-to-twelve day detox period, and we would titrate you back, we would use some different types of, Suboxone is one thing that we've used for years to, to bring people down. However, now with Fentanyl and some of the other cutting agents, you're not sure what people are using. So, you know, it has to be on a case-by-case basis for the withdrawal, which can last up to seventeen days, sometimes even longer. Because benzodiazepines are involved, and so many people will use Xanax, or Librium, or Valium to quell some of the uncomfortable withdrawal feelings, symptoms themselves, they become hooked on that. So, now we're looking at, sometimes up to about a twenty-one day detox in conjunction from the benzodiazepine. So, and the standard policy pays for about ten to fourteen days. So, there's some dilemmas here in terms of being able to, you know, get that paid for, and then how that impacts on your success. In nineteen eighty-four, I went to treatment, I had gotten to the end, I was a victim of the last thing with cocaine. I got seven days of detox, I got thirty-five days of inpatient, two members of my family went to a week's family program, I got two years of aftercare, and I, I have, you know, I always say, "I'm a best practice." I haven't used in thirty-three years, and I've had a very productive life, and wonderful things have happened. You, you know, somebody to get that type of service, now you have to win the Lotto, it's like, you know. We have beds in, we have about a three-to-four week waiting list to get into our facility, and yet there are empty beds in other facilities, because they refuse to accept certain types of payment or certain types of reimbursement. So, so just accessing treatment is a, is a feat in itself. And certainly, Scott, who is in, you know, they see them first, I'm a late-in-the-game guy. If you see me, or if I have to come get you, you're in a lot of trouble, and something's usually really wrong, and you're going to come to our level of care where certainly that's indicated. The, there are, you know, ideally, if we could bring people in and get them into some other type of care, you know, halfway house, or structured, some type of structured living, and all the research tells us ninety days is what works for this population. The biggest difficulty we have is that, I just had a case today where I had a fifty-one-year-old guy, and there's no place for him. Everything is structured for an eighteen-to-twenty-five, or eighteen-to-twenty-seven population. And this guy legitimately needs extended care, and a lot of these other places, they don't want to bring somebody in who's fifty-one years old, because they, it's hard to justify that to the parents of the seventeen-year-old child. There isn't funding for it, most of these services that would extend it out. So, so we're in kind of a crisis mode right now, you know. Our reimbursement time in the last twelve months, we've had a change in, in, just in our regional health insurance, Highmark is now our largest health insurer, they have a different policy than the old Blue Cross and Blue Shield Northeastern Pennsylvania folks did. So, where we used to get twenty-four to twenty-eight days, we maybe get eighteen to twenty-one days now. And that's in the middle of a crisis. We also, so, bed availability certainly changes, the, the substance abuse field has become, in the, in the longer term and more intense services, very much a, the government's focus on it has been a lot of office-based stuff, where we will give you some type of prescription, and you come back on a regular basis. And then the difficulty is trying to monitor that with, with therapy. Because what we know is, is that, the issue is, is that the people who are abusing are those people who get hooked, and they're, it's a one-time thing, and they're in and they're out. People who are addicted have coping skill deficits, communication skill deficits, stress reduction. It's, it's about a learning opportunity, and so putting somebody into an inpatient setting is all about taking them away from the substance and away from the environment that the substance is available in, and beginning to teach those skill sets. It's not unusual, we have a lot of forty-year-old juvenile delinquents. You know, my mother refused to swear I was one of them, but the, you know, what it is, is usually, what you see is the emotional development will stop at the time an individual gets into some heavy usage. So, we see a lot of people who have skill sets that are in the fourteen-to-sixteen-year-old range, and they're in their late twenties. So, you know, send, take, bringing somebody in for twelve days, sending them out still toxic, can, can be difficult. And it's hard to watch. And I just, I just had recently a terrible, terrible, terrible thing. A young girl, I've been working with her since she's fifteen years old, she's twenty-one. We finally got her into the right kind of care for the right period of time, and she spent six months in a, in a treatment center and an extended care, and when she came home, there was a three-month waiting list for a halfway house. And so, and she waited. And about two months into it, you know, she, she relapsed, and they found her in her, on her, on her couch. And I was heartbroken, you know, I thought, "Boy, this is it, we got her," you know, and we got it set. So, there just aren't the, and it, you know, how do you explain that? How do you, you know, I don't know, but I never thought that my, one of my clinical skills would be sitting in somebody's kitchen and talking about their dead child, you know, that was not something that you need to be good at. But, but there aren't a lot of the services available that will offer that. We're incredibly fortunate in this area, that we have some of the finest treatment resources in the world. We have Marweth, we have Clearbrook, these guys at the Wright Center are a center of excellence, which offers them all sorts of other things to be able to do. Our biggest detox in Lackawanna County is right up the street here, at the Lackawanna County Jail. Because we have judges and prosecutors who have the foresight to know that if we don't put them in jail, they're going to die, and they're going to die of an overdose. And we're very fortunate to have those people in, in, in our world, because we would lose a lot more. A hundred is a, is a low number, believe it or not, for the number of people we have in our county. And the fact that these guys are willing to charge people, because in a lot of counties, they won't charge them for possession. Or if they come and they hit them with the Narcan, there's a needle there, a lot of counties won't prosecute. We do, and we have a great drug court system, and a lot of that stuff. So, coercion works, and long-time, long-term care works, you know, some people get very frustrated by it. But the longer you have to clear your head, and it can take up to two years, post-acute withdrawal can take up to twenty-four months in some cases, the, the better we can do. And, you know, the dilemma in this crisis is that the resources are shrinking, and the epidemic is growing.
Because most of these people who are addicted to heroin don't have jobs.
No.
So, they don't have insurance. You know, and they come into the ER, and the parent say, "You got to put them in rehab." I said, "I can't, who's going to pay for it? We don't have the funding." So, what is he supposed to do, go home and die? I said, "I can just tell you what I can and can't do, but I don't have the, we don't have the resources to provide care for your child, because there's no money." Yeah, and that's what the county works on, to put together programs to help. But the numbers are getting bigger and bigger, how, is, the money just isn't there?
Explain to me, because I, I don't know, I'm, I'm a little confused on this. With drug court, and I would assume when you're in court, it means you did something against the law. So, if you're getting prescriptions written by doctors that you become addicted to, obviously, that's not against the law. So, what's the difference, then, between the people who end up in drug court, either one can say, and the, and the people who are plain old addicted because they're getting these prescriptions?
Well, I mean, unfortunately and fortunately, our Treatment Court program is probably one of the most successful treatment programs that we have. It's an eighteen-month-long program, if you do everything right. For most people, it's about a two-year program. What the Treatment Court does is it teaches the participants how to live their lives all over again, but this time without the substance that has become such a necessary crutch. You know, if you have children, you're, you're put into parenting classes. If you don't have an education, you're forced to get a GED. If you have an education, but you don't work, they send you to vocational training. If you have an education but you don't work, they send you to vocational training. You're seen by intense probation, regular random urine screens. You go to AA meetings or 12 step meetings. They really occupy every free second of your life for a long time until you learn how to live all over again. But what makes it work is you need to have very significant criminal charges hanging over your head. Because if we ever did it with minor charges and we made people try to jump through all of these hoops, at some point they would just turn around and say, forget it. Put me in jail, let me serve my couple days and I'm going back to my life. So we need people who commit felony thefts, forgeries, burglaries if it's, you know, a family member or someone that we want to allow that in, or if a victim's okay with allowing the person in. But they need to be significant charges. So why I say it's good and it's bad is that, you know, you could have Johnny sitting over here in this chair who's never broken alone in his life and needs help and Johnny doesn't have insurance and his parents don't have the wherewithal to give Johnny an 18 month program. And because Johnny doesn't have criminal charges, he doesn't get the benefits of that program. So it's, it's tough, but it's an absolute lifesaver. You know, John and I met by working with our drug court. It was one of my first assignments in the DA's office. And, you know, I get out of law school, I want to be a tough prosecutor, I want to throw people in jail. And now Judge Jarbola sends me over to treatment court. Every Thursday I would have to go over there and Judge Beres would call someone up and the guy would say, I've been sober now for three weeks. And everybody would clap and I would sit there and think, what in the world am I doing? Like I thought I was going to be putting these people in jail. Well, after a couple months and now many years, I sit back and think, it's one of the greatest things we have and the amount of lives that it has saved and quite honestly, the philosophy that it's instilled in me, we will never arrest our way out of this problem. We will never incarcerate our way out of this problem. You know, for years and years since President Reagan, we fought the war on drugs and we sought the demand. We were going to go after every drug dealer and that's where we were going to focus all of our attentions. We failed miserably. Okay? I'm not saying we wave the white flag and say we give up. We continue to go after dealers and we will pursue them and we'll lock them up for as long as we possibly can. The only way we're ever going to stop them is if we end the demand. If we don't get the people to stop seeking the drugs, the supply will always be there. It's lucrative, they don't care that they're preying on our loved ones. If they're going to make money by doing it, they'll do it.
Can I, oh, can I just add one? Wait, go ahead.
No, I was just going to, you may want to mention, what, you mentioned why, you know, how do they come off of the thing if they don't get prescribed? You can't get into the program using those substances. So you have to find alternative substances. And it goes back to what we said earlier, it's amazing how quickly people when faced with, I can go to jail and have nothing, or I can be involved in this program and make some changes, how quickly the pain goes away, so to speak. And people will say, yes, I won't take those drugs anymore. Thank you very much, Judge.
One thing I forgot to say, the benefit of the program for the participants is at the end of your, your program, if you successfully complete it, your charges are dismissed. If you remain clean for a period of time afterwards and crime free, your record is expunged. So it's like the criminal episode never happened and you're, you're free to continue on with your life.
So what I wanted to say though, in family court, we have our own drug court, if you will. So with the cases that come in front of me and the other judges in family court, I mean, we have to be ready to, and I've put this in many of the court orders I have, 90 meetings in 90 days. Be admitted and provide proof to the court, facts proof that you're going and that you're attending and I want to see the listing of each meeting you go to. I want you to have a sponsor and I want proof of the sponsor and actually at the next custody review hearing, I want your sponsor to be here. Okay? And be, provide proof of admission into an alcohol drug rehabilitation center. And many times I'm dealing with John Knowles with regard to that. I mean, I've had, I had one, many people come in, but one guy I remember particularly in PFA court, it was actually with the DA's office. It was a contempt situation where a grandmother, you know, notified the police that her grandson made contact with her when there was a PFA. So the grandmother comes in with the guy, the guy's brought in in shackles because he violated the PFA. The grandmother brings in a rehab, a man, a representative from a rehab center down in Luzerne County and said, okay, you know, we want him to get the help he needs. And his lawyer said, we have, we have this gentleman here, he's ready to take him right now from jail to the center. So I asked the guy, where are you from? And he gave me the name of the center. I never heard of the center before. What kind of a center is it? Is it inpatient or outpatient? Outpatient, he says. So I turned to the guy, the grandson, who is in his 30s, what's the drug of choice? What's your drug of choice? What do you use? Heroin. Have you been in rehab before? Yeah. I said, thanks for coming, Mr. So-and-so. Sorry, there is no way I would ever send that, that guy to an outpatient rehab for heroin addiction. I mean, he'll be out in the street, he'll be dead. So I told his lawyer, I said, here's what I want you to do, get with the DA, I want you to start making calls. Call Clearbrook. Here's John Knowles's cell number. Call John Knowles. Call Marworth. You know, I will allow him to leave jail if you get a bed for the guy. He needs help. He needs help. And he had been through rehab, other places where he left, he signed himself out. Finally, thanks to John, John was able to pick him up, I think he drove there, he picked him up at jail and he got him down to the rehab center. And he was successful and he got through. And I actually ran into him, I was getting coffee at Northern Lights and he came up to me and he said, can I ask you something, Ms. Monley? I said, oh, it's about a case, I can't talk to you. He said, no, no, I have to talk to you. I said, I can't talk to you. He said, you, I got through the program, you saved my life.
Oh.
You know? So I mean, those are the good, good stories, you know?
Jules, it's good to be judge, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go.
You can help people.
I know. Can we take, we would love, love to take questions. I'm sure you guys would love that. Is there anyone there who has a question for any of the panelists? There has to be somebody with a question. Sure.
I have lots of questions. Let me see. First of all, I think that this is such a great collaboration and can't you videotape this and like then send it out to schools and different places and make it mandatory that they see everything?
Well, it is being videotaped, so the next one step.
I want to give a question, address a question to Judge Monley. So say someone has an overdose of heroin in the front seat, falls asleep and the child is in the back. Aside from having a drug addiction now, he has a criminal record, right, that he's putting a child in danger?
Potentially, sure.
Exactly. So now he's just dug his hole much, much deeper. So then do you put, take the child away, like what do you do? Where's that child go?
Usually when I see the case, it's Office of Youth and Family Services end up coming if there is not an available parent. You know, the police certainly would be on the scene, you know, somehow they would be making contact with the other authorities, the agency, the child protective services and the people from Office of Youth and Family Services would be rushing in with an emergency petition for special relief to get the child safe housing, you know, or getting the child to a grandparent, whatever needs to be done.
Would he get jail time for this?
So that's on the criminal end.
That would honestly all depend upon what his prior record looks like. Our judges use a sentencing matrix. So you look at the significance of the current crime and then you look at what their prior records was and it's like a map, you actually plot it to see if they would get time. If it's a person that has no record on that, no. That's probably not a crime that would land them in our jail. The beauty of that crime though is endangering the welfare of a child, a misdemeanor of the first degree. It's punishable by a maximum of five years, $10,000. The gift of getting arrested in this situation with that crime is for five years, our judges would be able to order that person to comply with probation, get random drug screening, go to parenting classes. And you're able to force that person, you know, you'll hear often, external motivation until it's internalized. You, you actually can lead them to water and make them drink because if they don't, you put them back in jail. So it works. And that's why you see our jail used so much as a detox facility. But we're fortunate to have similar philosophies with our judges, with our prosecutors, with our county commissioners, our single county authority, our treatment facilities. Everybody really works well together. We all understand the magnitude of the place where we find ourselves and we don't want to lose a generation to this. So we're really all trying to come together.
I ask that one more question.
Sure, no, go ahead.
But I'm finding it very interesting, but I'll direct this to Mr. Knowles. Back in the day, I like saying that, cocaine, it was a 28 day rehab. Am I right? 28 days.
Twenty, forty-two days, yeah.
Now that heroin is such, it's more dangerous, more addictive, we're getting less time in a rehab facility. That doesn't make sense. So I hear more and more people going to Florida for six months, one year. I don't get it that they're getting less time because you said Highmark now is only offering 15 days. So you're not giving the 28 day to a heroin addict.
Correct.
So it just doesn't make sense. So should these people be going out of state to Texas or to Florida to get their six months in?
From a statistical standpoint, the, all the research indicates that the best possible care is provided in the local environment, which is contrary to what most people believe. Most people believe geographical care, let's get them out of the area. And the reality is that the supports are available in the area, the family supports and what you have to do is round up all those other supports. Other states do not have the same regulatory powers that Pennsylvania does in terms of how they regulate the treatment facilities and the treatment centers. We have what's called an Act 106 that covers about a third of the individuals in the state of Pennsylvania that says the treatment center can determine how much time the person gets. Once you get outside of that population, and most of those people will get 28 days. So, you know, you could have two people with a policy with, say, Highmark or Geisinger and if you're an Act 106 person, if you worked for, and you're covered under that legislation, you get 28 days. If you're not, you get what the insurance company determines is appropriate. The Florida model is not inpatient care and so it's a different level of severity. So there are varying levels. So there is an intense detox, there is intensive inpatient, there's residential, there's step down. And at each level of care, it's a, you have less intensity and you have less, less professionals involved in the care. It tends to be, you know, if you go into a Marworth or a Clearbrook, you're going to see a doctor and a nurse practitioner and nurses and clinicians who've been in business for, who've been in for 15 or 20 years. As you go to varying levels of care down until you get to intensive outpatient or outpatient, which tends to have more of a trained population working. You know, going out of state, the dilemma is, is you go to, what I tell people here is, I live in Lackawanna County. Somebody says to me, I'm going to go to Florida. I said, I don't have a guy in Florida. I can't take care of you in Florida. If you get thrown there, because what happens is you go down there and you find out, most of these places are for profit facilities. You go down there and you find out that your insurance does not buy nine months of treatment. Your insurance in an inpatient setting will only buy three to five days of treatment. And then they will sell you to their, to their partner, not always, but many times. And this is a big problem down there, is that you will then go to this outpatient. And they will take you because they can, they then bill your, for urine drug screens. So you will do a urine drug screen on a daily basis and they will bill your insurance company $40,000 a month for the urine drug screens and they will scholarship the treatment. So it's all about smoke and mirrors. Now your mother and father aren't there. My father, God bless him, my father showed up at treatment twice a week and, you know, my dad was a hard drinker, he stopped drinking, said, what do we got to do to save our boy? My wife came twice a week. My wife went to family care, my wife went to two years of aftercare. My father went to two years of aftercare. You know, I was able to, you know, people in the community rallied around my employer, you know, we went to my employer and talked to them. I do that on a daily basis. You know, if you come to me and I send you to treatment, when you get out, I ask you to call me the day you get out. When you don't call me the day you get out, I either call you or come to your house and say, why didn't you call me? You know, you don't get that in Florida. The legislators in Florida are not going to go after that because it's the number two business in Palm Beach County. And everybody who dies in Palm Beach County is from somewhere else. So somebody's grandmother isn't calling the legislator in Palm Beach County and saying, hey, our kids are dying. They don't care, you know, it's not a big deal if somebody from Wisconsin is calling and saying, hey, what happened to my son? So it's a, and there is Arizona, California, Texas, their laws are different that allow for this. And it's ending. It's ending pretty significantly now and you'll see a lot of that. But that's where the for-profit world, so what happened is we had a lot of people making a lot of money on people's pain. And if, and so there's a lot of fake news out there about treatment and what works and what doesn't work. And the treatment works, works awful good. I'm living proof of that and I can parade in front of you a thousand people that do that. Is it different for this? There's no question. Some of the old methods aren't as successful with this population, but locally based is best. Getting people in the community to rally around you is best. And we have a community here second to none. You will not find a DA's office or judicial system that operates like this in conjunction because this is their biggest problem. And so, you know, the ability to accommodate treatment is pretty, pretty remarkable. But, but treatment works and works real well. Unfortunately, you know, we have to, we have to find a way to accommodate that. I'd love to have 90 days for, you give me 90 days for, people say to me all the time, does treatment work, you know, what's your success rate? So it's 100% if you do what we tell you. You know?
Any other questions?
I have a quick one. We know that relapses are a decision story. And it's continuous sometimes, sometimes it's only one time for a long period of time. So how do you deal with people who relapse all the time? Well, how do you deal with them? In court, in treatment center, you know, okay, I'm straight, I need, but there's a good chance I'm going to relapse. So many reasons why you do.
Unfortunately, right now what we're seeing is with the strength and purity of our heroin and with the additions of fentanyl and carfentanil, often those relapses are fatal, which is really terrifying. So although I think you used to hear quite often that relapse is part of recovery, I don't think there's too many people up here that would be comfortable to say that at this point because of how strong our drugs are.
This pathology certainly is a lot different. One of the scary parts about not having enough time to take care of people, it's almost unfair. The majority of the people who die of overdoses die after treatment because their tolerance level has dropped so they go back to the levels that they were at before. And they were, we just, I just had a young guy, Justin, and beautiful kid, beautiful family, was a great athlete, blew his shoulder out, you know, the whole typical story. And he was, couldn't get into treatment because he hadn't used in a week. He was straight for about a month, went to work on a 3 to 11 and used and died. He sat on the couch and put his head back. And that's, that's what you see. Those are the ones that we're seeing where folks go. So the relapse certainly is, it's much higher in this population. There's a different pathology with it, the craving is much more. There are some great interventions out there now that, you know, can be utilized, there are, but if you don't do them with the therapy and you don't do them in conjunction with the medical, it's really got to be a much more, and that's what these guys are, what's so exciting about having somebody like this rise is that they do that comprehensive kind of wraparound services. We've got some, some other good providers in the area, you know, that will do the same. But, and it's not going back to square one. That's the other thing. It's not throwing out the stuff that's worked for us. 12 step stuff has worked really good for a long time and there's still a big portion of population that that was going to work real well for. So we don't want to get rid of that. We want to, we want to add to that. And we want to find out, okay, what happened this time? Because it's not the same thing as nine months ago. And then if you're not looking like you did your best day in recovery seven days later, then we're missing something.
And I think you see it a lot too with, and this is sort of obvious, but when the people don't cut the ties with those, you know, connections that they had before where they got the stuff for somebody else in their family. they got the stuff or somebody else in their family, you know, their significant other is still using. And I've even seen, and I mentioned this at a previous panel, but even where the individual is in medication treatments such as like Suboxone, that they start using the Suboxone and become hooked on that. I've even had people in front of me getting Suboxone from other people who were addicted. Okay? So that's becoming something that I see. And frankly, you know, I don't know about the others, but I'm one for not using that. I mean, I can see the reason for using it, but I also see people who are selling it on the street and, you know, people using it illegally when they shouldn't be or higher doses than are prescribed, you know? So, but I do agree that relapse is part of the disease process because the individual is very vulnerable, but you got to cut those associations, cut those ties, and it's a whole new way of life. It's a disease. It's not like a ward. I always say, it's not like a ward that you can cut out and it's gone. It's something you're going to be living with for the rest of your life.
Dr. Pancholi has a question.
So I'd like to hear more about what resources are out there for patients who are addicted to prescription drugs. What are those resources in our community?
Well, I mean, I think, you want me to take this? Well, I think from an outpatient perspective, you have a lot of outpatient programs, right? Get them involved in support groups such as AA, NA. I believe in meeting clients where they're at, right? So a lot of patients, we can't force them to drink the water, but maybe they'll meet us halfway. So if they say, "You know what? I'll go to an outpatient, but I don't want intensive outpatient. But I'll go to an outpatient." I believe that you let them go to the outpatient and don't force them to go to the IOP. And you gradually give them a taste so now they see that there's light, that there is hope in recovery. I believe that you have to tap into, you know, the family, the friends, if they have positive ones, churches, spirituality. I think that there's a lot of different options for individuals. When we talk about prescription drugs, we can't cut people off prescription drugs and not offer them something else, right? So I believe that we have to look at alternative medicines. I'm a big believer in yoga. I'm a big believer in mindfulness. I think that a lot of that stuff has some strong data that it works, right? So I think that if you can give them a taste, I have many, 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 many clients that we've suggested yoga therapy and now they're addicted to that. Okay? So the one thing about an addict is, they're always going to be an addict, right? So we want to get them a positive addiction, right? You know, like, one time a wife called me and said, "You know, you got my husband going to the gym and he lives at the gym now." I said, "Well, is it better than the bar?" So at least you know where he is and he's doing something healthy for himself. So I think that, you know, when we look at prescription drugs, we have to try to find other alternatives such as physical therapy, such as occupational therapy, such as, you know, yoga or mindfulness-based stuff. A lot of inpatient facilities are leaning that way now and offering that. You know, there's a lot of different therapies out there that work for people, such as art therapy and music therapy and dance therapy and, you know, the list goes on and on and on. You have to tap into what works for that individual. And sometimes it takes a while to find it, but, you know, what works for me might not work for you, right? So you can't force me to do something that's not going to work for me, right? So like, I think that we have to be open-minded when we look at an individual with addiction issues and ask them, "What are you willing to do?" Sometimes they say to you, "Nothing. Nothing." So that's when we have to kind of force them, right? And we have to force them to taste it a little bit. You know, that's when the system, it's good for the system to get involved. You know, jail is one of the best detoxes. Sometimes that is rock bottom for an individual, but I've seen people that have went to jail 20 times and when they got out, they got a spade shovel and dug deeper. You know, for, sometimes for an addict, rock bottom is not rock bottom. They'll dig deeper, right? Sometimes rock bottom for an individual is death, as sad as that sounds, you know? But I just want to kind of comment on alternative therapies for individuals. I was abstinence-based trained, right, when I first got into the field. And when methadone started coming out and buprenorphine and naltrexone, vivitrol, it was very difficult for me to change my ways, right? Because I was, you know, trained that you get through it. You suck it up. You go to treatment, you, you know, make the right decisions, you know, change your people, places and things and, you know, get into true recovery and you'll be, you'll be okay. And that worked for a lot of people. But I think the problem today is the opiates of today are not what they were 10 years ago. So I have a family member who actually used heroin back in the Vietnam era and came home from Vietnam. Most Vietnam vets used heroin while they were in Vietnam. And they came home to their family and they quit, like that, right? So they came home to a positive environment. They were missing their kids. When they were in Vietnam, it was nothing but negative, doom and gloom, right, death. So I think today's heroin and just piggybacking off of what Chain said and John, what it's caught with today affects the brains. It's so strong.
May I just introduce?
Yeah.
The Oxycontin was not available until the late 80s and early 90s. So that's where the Oxycontin is made specifically to addict. And they knew this. That's why they're getting sued and winning lawsuits they're going to want. So that, I think that's where the difference is coming in from our 70s and as compared to the 90s. And that's why it's so important for us to just not even use them at this point.
I think when we talk about prescription, that's true, but I'm talking about street heroin. Today's street heroin is not what it was back then, right?
I don't know about that.
It's not, it's caught, it's caught with all kinds of derivatives and junk that is causing that, that strong addiction. So, you know, we have patients that actually will find out that a friend of theirs overdosed and had to be Narcaned. And it might have been the bag with the Superman symbol on it. And they want to go find that bag and use that bag because of the high, right?
But they'll do it right.
They'll do it right because they're a good addict. And they're a professional addict, right? But they don't understand that that bag might have been cut with fentanyl or carfentanil. Okay? So I have a close friend who lost his son and he was six months or eight months clean and he took a hot shot and he died of a fentanyl overdose. So I do agree that these people coming out of prison, you know, sometimes when you're not working on the root cause of your addiction, right? A lot of people with addiction have trauma. And I think we need to look at that. And I think we need to look at the individual and I think we need to start treating individuals as a whole. So, and not live on separate islands, you know, work with the inpatients, the PCPs, the specialists, the mental health professionals, the system. Everybody's got to come together because it's going to take a village to beat this.
Because the late stage, to be in a late-stage addiction means you've lost everything. And it means that you then become into a survival mode, which means that you do things in the spirit, 90% of what we deal with in our setting is the spiritual sickness, which is the compromise. You know, the individual's compromising their morals and values and have to engage in activities in order to continue using that puts them in very compromising situations. And it's very, and it's very traumatic. A lot of trauma there. Some of it is episodic, some of it is chronic, but there's a lot there. Also though, to the root of your question, there are some very well-trained professionals who you can go to. And you have to be careful when coming off of prescription medications to go to someone who knows what they're talking about as opposed to somebody who's following the guidelines because the guidelines are what got us here. You know? And so a well-intentioned physician who was seeing, and the doctor will tell you, these guys had to see seven or eight people a day. So they didn't have the opportunity to read the newspaper or find, some guys might not even know about the epidemic that's going on there because they're working so hard to help people and take care of them. So you want to go to somebody who's a specialist, you know, places like the Center of Excellence or a doctor who is certified in addiction medicine or to see a clinician who would, "Do you have an abuse issue? Is there trauma? You know, is there something going on in the home here?" I mean, there's a lot of issues. The largest population that's dying now is over 45. You know, they're dying from prescription medications.
And I also think, and I'm going to say this, Dr. Pancholi, that we also have to start looking at, you know, people who have been on pain medicine for 30 years or benzodiazepines for 30 years. I mean, sometimes, I'm going to be honest with you, like, I've said this to many doctors, like, is it, like, 60, 70 years old, like, is it better to take them off or, you know, put them in detox because you've been on it so long? Like, what's worse? You know, like, you know?
True battles.
Right. That's my, that's, I think, sometimes my opinion as well. Like, we have a lot of long-term opiate users and we can't just rip them off, right? Like, can't.
Because the resources aren't there.
Right.
And you do a terrible disservice to individuals if you go with, you know, your value system versus what can realistically happen. So if you're, if you're a 70-year-old guy and you've been smoking pot since you're 16, you should probably keep smoking pot because we don't have the ability. And I have guys who would line up in my office to write that script for them, but, you know, because we just don't have the resource. It would take so much to be, and then what says the guy's quality of life is going to be better, like you said. So finding somebody who can do that comprehensive assessment and say, "Okay, what are we really looking at here? And what do we really want to achieve and where do they want to go?" You know, because we've created this problem.
John, but if I, this patient comes in addicted to oxy, he's on fentanyl. All right, doctor, just stop it. Just cut him off. Okay, so what happens then, Shay?
He goes right out, right out to the street and he'll buy the $3 bag of heroin.
And they die from overdose. So that's the battle we have to face. You recognize the issue, but what do I do as a clinician to get him detoxed? How do I get him off these medications? You know, does he require an aggressive care? Can I start cutting five milligrams every week or every month and titrate him down? You know, so that's the battle that we have. But there's a darkness, and you're hearing this, look, there's a darkness around this epidemic, you know, and it lives in the dark. You know, and what we're trying to do is shine light on it. And what we want you to do after you hear this, you got to go out and shine light on it. But no one wants to tell you about their mother who's a drug addict. No one wants to tell you about their kids is a drug addict. They hide it because they're embarrassed. No one wants to talk about it, you know? I have friends of mine, I know their kids are using and they won't even tell me. And I know they are because I've seen them in treatment in other situations and they refuse to even discuss it. And they're my friends because they're embarrassed.
The worst thing I hear when I'm out there is somebody that says to me, "But my doctor prescribed it for me." You know? And they'll say, and I'll say, "But you're on it for two years. You're addicted." No, my doctor prescribed it for me. And it's just a false narrative. And they will blame whoever they can, anybody but themselves.
Kids say that too. They take a pill, "Well, it's not dangerous. It's a prescription. My mother got it prescribed. How dangerous can it be?"
That's right. That's why it's so important for us, as Dr. Singh, we have to take, you know, by hand and run with it.
I think that's one of the main things I appreciate about this panel today is that they're not holding the physician culpable for something that was come into a system of pain being the fifth vital sign. The drug companies doing their part. So I think that if we all work together, this is the beginning of having solutions.
Correct. And you know, there's bad in everything. There's bad physicians out there, right? There's bad in everything. So we're not talking about the doctor feel-good, right? I mean, you know, the doctor feel-good are greedy and they don't care about human beings and they're the ones prescribing, they're giving the doctors who are prescribing buprenorphine appropriately a bad name because we have people locally that are not prescribing buprenorphine in a structured way.
Right. If you send somebody, here's how you know you're sending somebody the wrong person, when they have to have $250 cash for the visit and they have to have the $200 cash for the Suboxone. If you send somebody, if somebody comes back to you and says, "I went and saw the person you sent me to and this is what I had to do." And that's how they report it, then we're in trouble because that person's not going to get any other service and won't get.
Mary Ann has another question. Don't be told me not to ask. Why? Ronan, did you ask it?
Just in terms of it takes a village, it takes a community, one, two, three, what are the most important things we could do?
Acknowledge that it's here.
Acknowledge how huge this problem is and stop being afraid to talk about it.
And be, oh, and don't mean to interrupt you, be aware of the signs.
Question your physician. Do you really need that medication? Because they're under the guns to make sure that you get it. So if they have the ability to say, "The patient questioned me and didn't really feel that it was necessary," then they have the answer for that satisfaction survey that comes through from JACO and they can respond to that and still get their funding that they're, for your visit at their office and at the hospital or wherever you're at.
And thank you to all the systems that are helping.
May I just read one thing before we? I just want you to understand the anger I have towards now the pharmaceuticals and why, Dr. Pancholi, I am standing up for the medical community full force. Some of these areas were actually targeted for some of these sales. I just want you to hear, the Charleston Gazette Mail found that drug wholesalers shipped 780 million hydrocodone and oxycodone pills to West Virginia over six years. Over the same period, 1,728 people statewide died of opioid overdoses. But this is the big kicker. A single pharmacy in the Mingo County town of Kermit with a population of 392 people was supplied with nine million pills over two years.
Wow. Are they all dead?
About nine out of 10 calls were overdoses.
West Virginia, in those areas of West Virginia, this is very interesting because that area of West Virginia had the highest levels of workers' compensation claims.
They couldn't even find people to work. This is headed here if we don't stop.
And so they had the population, these guys did the research and saw that and they sent, they literally sent an army of salespeople there to sell this product to the doctors and lawyers and they flooded the airwaves with, and they said, "Take this, we'll take care of it." Because the people were there.
Yeah, that's what.
That's why I say it's up to us, it's up to all of us. And that's where the village comes in. We have to stop and narrow.
And that's a good way to end this. So if you could all, if I could ask all of you on the panel, very quickly, one thing I love, I love men who talk. Talk about women. These guys did a great job, all of them, didn't they? Love it. Love it. Keep going. I asked them all, "Please, are you a talker? We need you." So they're all here. I love it. Thank you. I want you, if you would, as you leave, first of all, when everyone goes, could you guys stay because we need two photos, okay, for the panel? But if you could just very briefly ask this community, TVs will hear it, everyone listening here, everyone watching TV, you're saying it takes a village, we all need to do our part. If you could think, one thing you could ask this community to do, each one of you, very quickly and end it that way. Commissioner Cummings.
Remove any and all opioid medications in your house and anybody you know in their homes and get rid of them.
Scott Constantine.
I think mine would be to help reduce the stigma because 80% of opiate users right now are not getting treatment. 20% are. So we've only touched it. So I think lifting the stigma and, you know, educating individuals who are labeling addicts as, you know, nasty words, I guess. I'm just going to say that. There's a lot of words out there, choice words that people label individuals who use with, just educate them.
Doctor Dempsey.
Recognize that this is an illness. You know, one of my patients said, "Doc, doc, alcoholism is a disease, right? Yeah. Well, then how come everybody hates me?" You know? Because they don't recognize that. So I've learned two things. One, when you're dealing with any drug addict or alcoholic, number one is recognize that there's, this is an evil here, you know? And love is what's going to solve this problem, you know?
Compassion.
And compassion, you know? Yelling at them, screaming is going to do it. So the two things you can do as someone who loves an alcoholic is, is don't enable them and don't be afraid to make decisions that may put them at risk in your mind, like kick them out of the house, you know? And two, pray for them. them out of the house, you know? And two, pray for them. Because in my experience, that's all you can do for someone who loves an alcoholic or a drug addict, you know, is don't enable them and pray for them. Other than that, they, they're responsible 100% for their own sobriety. You can't make them, you didn't cause it, you can't cure it. And what's the other one? Cause it, cure it, or, or, there was a three Cs.
Yeah, there is a three Cs.
You didn't cause it, you didn't cure, you can't control it.
You can't control it, that's right.
Yeah. You didn't cause it, you can't control it, you can't cure it.
Thank you. John, Noel?
Yeah, I live in a world, in God we trust, all others bring facts, you know? And what are the facts? And there are a lot of fallacies, and there are a lot of things associated with addiction. Go out and find out the facts, talk, get the real news, and then talk to the children, talk to your family members, talk to your grandparents, talk to the adults in your house, and, but find out the facts, and get the real facts.
District Attorney Shane Scanlon.
Join our fight. You gotta watch out for your fellow human being. If you see a friend, a loved one, someone that you care about changing, act. It is so much easier for these professionals to fix a three-week-old addiction than it is to try to fix a three-year-old addiction. We can't sit back and wait, or duck our heads and think that it's gonna go away on its own. We have to stand up for the people that we love and care about.
Judge Julia Monley.
I mean, my comments are similar to the others in terms of, don't be embarrassed. I'm, I'm sure so many of you have family members, close friends, who you can think of right now as you're sitting here, who have been touched by this horrific disease in one way or another. And our area, you know, the, look on every corner, there's a bar, you know? I'm from Archibald. How many bars are there in the town of Archibald, or in Jessup, or wherever? I mean, you know, it's in our families, it's in our society, it's an illness. And we have to recognize it as such, and we need to work with our family members, our friends, to try to find some help for them. And compassion is all what it's about. And it's, recognize that it is an illness, just like mental health is an illness. It is not taboo.
Thank you very much, everybody. Well, first of all, thank you again, everybody, for this wonderful discussion. Thank you for joining us. Thank you to the Cultural Center. This has been the Lackawanna County Commissions for Women Annual Health Seminar. Thanks, everybody. Bye-bye.